Call the meeting to order for December, September 12th, closed session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Stapleton has an excused absence and Councilmember Kleiman is on her way.
Jumping into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please.
Mayor Blom and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, I wanted to compliment our city attorney on the improved clarity of his posted closed session notices, although I would note that the actual subject matter of item 3B, which is the possible initiation of litigation, remains unknown to the public what you will be talking about. I also wanted to note that when you last met here three weeks ago at four o'clock, the subject was a study session on the 2023 water and wastewater rate study. And at the present moment, if one goes to the city website and searches on the word "water rates," you'll find a nice page that gives a timetable of the 2023 water rate study and has convenient links to the previous presentations about it, but as best I can tell, the actual study is still not posted. And I would note on that page, it says that in two weeks from now, you will be asked to approve the rate study, so I just continue to hope that it will be posted and available for you and the public to have time to look at before the entire agenda for the next meeting is posted, along with all the other material that you will have to review. I think the water rate study and the wastewater studies are worth having time to look at more than five days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for agenda and non-agenda items? Seeing none, Mr. Hart, do you have a closed session announcement?
All right, thank you, Mayor. The council will adjourn to closed session to meet with the city's real property negotiators regarding negotiations with the American Legion related to the property at 215 15th Street in Newport Beach, as well as meet with the city's legal counsel regarding three matters, including the initiation of litigation in regards to one matter, the Workers' Compensation Appeals Board case of Glenn White versus Newport Beach, and the litigation involving the Ohio House versus City of Costa Mesa. And that's all on the agenda under items 3A through D.
Thank you. We're adjourned until 5:00 P.M. I call the meeting to order for the September 12th regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Stapleton has an excused absence.
Ms. Hart, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. Now it's time for the invocation by Dr. Jim Turrell, Center for Spiritual Living Newport Mesa.
I am here to express the idea that there is a presence in this room which brings not only wisdom, but kindness and attentiveness. So I say that this presence is already manifesting a perfect meeting and that this council is under the influence of that love that it knows and it has for this community. So I say, thank you, God, for the success of this meeting already done, as I release the word into that law which now expresses what I have spoken, and so it is. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America, which is our only court of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and power. Moving on to presentations, we have a proclamation declaring September as Hunger Action Month. I'll read the proclamation, and then Jenna Song, Associate Board Member of Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County, come forward and say a couple of words. Let me go ahead and read the proclamation. City of Newport Beach proclamation, whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in California, where 10.5% of Californians face food insecurity on a daily basis, and one in every seven California children do not know where their next meal will come from. Everyone needs nutritious food to thrive, and people are working hard to provide for themselves and their families. Yet over 267,000 individuals, including over 64,000 children here in Orange County, are food insecure. The City of Newport Beach is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources that those in the City of Newport Beach need. The City of Newport Beach is committed to working with Abound Food Care, Orange County Food Bank, and Second Harvest Food Bank, collectively known as the Orange County Hunger Alliance, in educating people about the role and importance of food banks and food care in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. In the first half of 2023, Orange County Food Bank and the Second Harvest Food Bank collectively recorded an average of 888,000 food distribution visits per month from our neighborhoods facing food insecurity. In the first half of 2023, Orange County Food Bank and Second Harvest Food Bank have collectively distributed 33 million pounds of food through its partner network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, senior centers, schools, colleges, universities, and other community organizations. In the first half of 2023, Abound Food Care has recovered 307,000, we're really going for some numbers here, pounds of food, reducing food waste and diverting that food to those who need it. The month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the movement to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media, shares, and donations to ensure every community and everybody in it has the food that they need to thrive. Food banks and other organizations across the country, including the members of the Orange County Hunger Alliance, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end food insecurity in our community. Therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, and on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Hunger Action Month. Thank you so much. And if you have a few words to say, that'd be wonderful.
I wanted to, but it looks like they gave you all the information possible. Actually, yours was a lot longer than mine, but I would like to say that there is a big need in our community. In Orange County, there's about 267,000 individuals who are food insecure, and 60,000 of them are children. So I just want to thank the City of Newport Beach and the city council for really taking action and declaring September Hunger Action Month. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. And if you want to take a couple of photos, I think council would love to join you up
One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
The next proclamation will be recognizing International Literacy Day, which hopefully I proved I had after that last one. Okay. City of Newport Beach proclamation, whereas the need for highly literate citizenry is necessary as Newport Beach moves towards an increasingly challenging future, approximately 24% of the residents of Orange County are at a second-grade reading level and are lacking the literacy skills necessary to meet these challenges. Lack of literacy skills impacts not only their lives and the lives of their families, but their ability to work productively and their full participation as citizens, residents, and employees. Project Adult Literacy, a program of the Newport Beach Public Library, works with adults seeking to develop their literacy skills to empower them to achieve greater success in their lives, at home, at work, and in the community. Project Literacy, a program of the Newport Beach Public Library, hosts an annual International Literacy Day event to highlight the importance of literacy in society and the great strides that program participants have made. Now therefore, I, Noah Blom, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim September 8th, 2023, as Literacy Awareness Day. Wonderful. So, oh, hello. Wow, you were very efficient. I like that. Couple of words.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and members of council. My name is Rebecca Lightfoot. I am your library services manager. Here with me this evening is Gabriella Lehman, who is our literacy coordinator for Project Adult Literacy. I want to thank you for recognizing the importance of the Newport Beach Public Library's literacy program and taking the time to recognize all the impressive work that our volunteers do. Last year, we logged over 4,000 volunteer hours. We have 86 learners and 63 tutors participating in the program. Everyone involved in this wonderful program is so honored to be making a difference in our community. Thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. If you'd like to take a couple of photos, that'd be wonderful. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Wonderful. Now it's time for council announcements, oral reports from council members on committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A1 item. Councilmember Kleiman.
Thank you, Mayor Blom. Let's see, since the last meeting, I attended my monthly O-COG Board and SCAC Regional Council meetings, as well as the ACCOC Sober Living and Recovery Home Virtual Roundtable meeting. And we had, we successfully hosted our first sober living task force meeting here at City Hall. And after a very long summer, I'm happy to announce, although he is not, that my son finally went back to school last week.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant.
Great week, or a couple of weeks in the city. I attended the Sherman Library and Gardens Newport Beach Summer Garden Party, which was quite spectacular. It's their annual fundraising benefit for their education programs. It's a wonderful amenity in our community, and it was fun to support them. They had their hat contest, which is very vibrant and unusual. There were a lot of actually pickleball hats. There were Barbie hats, just really original. No lawn bowling hats, maybe next year. I was fortunate enough to be invited to a Women United presentation that is a philanthropy of women who engage throughout Orange County in supporting the United Ways mission of ending homelessness, which we're very concerned with here in the City of Newport Beach. They do a wonderful job connecting vulnerable residents with financial assistance and access to needed resources, and it was really a great pleasure to meet these women and see how active they are in our community in trying to move the needle on homelessness. I also attended, along with Councilmember Kleiman and Councilmember Wigan, the California Sober Living Recovery and Task Force meeting. We're working hard on bringing together other cities to address the negative impacts that these unregulated sober living and recovery homes are having on our community here in the city and in the county and across the state, actually. The task force is looking at pooling resources and collaborating so that we can work together to drive change, and so there'll be more about that in the future. I know that Councilmember O'Neill will be reporting on the Spyglass Hill Annual Meet and Greet Picnic, which was lovely. I would just want to thank him for being such a driving force and bringing the community together in that picnic. He's very supportive of it, and I know that they love him up there, so I want to thank him for bringing that picnic to our community. It's really a wonderful community event and led by another resident, Lori Horn, and she's the publisher of Stroll Spyglass, which is a great publication in our community. And then finally, I had the great honor of attending the Elks 9/11 Memorial Event on Sunday. It was remarkable. Lots of Elks dignitaries from across the Southland came to Newport Beach to recognize the memorial, and we had some wonderful remarks from our Newport Beach Chief of Fire, Chief Jeff Boyles, and our Newport Beach Police Lieutenant Corey Wolick in bringing their personal remembrances and their personal activity relating to the 9/11 event, to that event. And it was, again, quite remarkable to be there and see the thousands of flags planted by the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts and just enjoy being together as a community to remember. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wigan.
Yes, I just have a couple. I attended our Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission meeting last Tuesday, and I just wanted to go and extend my thanks for a very well-done program this year for our summer and our youth. And there are, you know, a lot of weeks that parents have to find a place for their children when school is out for the summer, and our city does such a fabulous job of having these programs. They're weekly, and I, as I told the commission, a lot of moms sit around their computer waiting for a specific time so they can log their kids, and it's like a Taylor Swift concert. They're like right on it, and if they don't get on it, they lose out. So there's a very strong contingent of our city, and parents like myself who both work, having a place for your kids to go during the summer is meaningful. So our city does a great job in our recreation department putting together these programs for our youth, so I thank them for their services on that. That same evening, I went to Costa Mesa City Council meeting, and they had a very robust discussion on their cannabis retail locations. So as of right now in their city, they've approved and have operating seven retail locations. Twelve of more are going to be going online soon, and then they have 50-something in the queue over their processes through their staff. So there's a significant impact to Newport Beach residents who live close, especially in my district. So I wanted the council to know that I am concerned they have no cap on their limit. They also have no requirements on their distancing, so they can have, and there is a proposal right now with the amount that have been approved, there will be three on one corner of an intersection, on three different corners of an intersection on Newport Boulevard. So it's a little bit of a concern to some of the constituents, especially in my neighborhood. So I wanted them to know that I was paying attention to the issue. I'm not there to do their business, but I, as a Newport Beach resident, am concerned. And then lastly, this is a, I would have adjourned in memory should she have been a Newport Beach resident, but she is a Huntington Beach resident, but had a significant impact in my life. So she has a memorial service. Her name is Captain Emily Sanford, United States Navy retired, and she was a Fair Board member appointed by the governor at one point, but she served in the Navy for many years as a nurse. And I'd known her for 20-plus years. She passed away, and her memorial service is next Thursday, so I just wanted to use my time to memorialize her for myself. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bravery.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the Water Quality Coastal Tylerlands Committee here at City Hall, and as usual, a lot of input. It's a great committee, just defending our harbor and our upper Newport Bay, lots of energy, and I was standing in for Councilmember Stapleton, who's the chair. And I also attended last week, in my capacity, as a director of the Orange County Sanitation District, attended the Operations Committee, which deals with all the things I kind of like, big pumps and mechanical things and, you know, lots of engineering. So it's an incredible, I won't even go into, it is, this, the Orange County Sanitation District is so well-run and serves the needs of 3.2 million people in Orange County, it's something, and it does a lot to protect our health and the safety. And finally, I also attended the Sherman Gardens Engagement, Community Engagement Meeting. I sit on the Sherman Foundation Board. It's just a wonderful organization, as I think everybody in Newport Beach knows. There's two oasises of Cronomar, and one's up here on the hill, the senior center, and the other's Sherman Gardens. And there also, on, coming ahead here will be a significant investment into the facilities and the programs and going in a direction of education for kids. So it's, there's a lot more coming from Sherman Gardens. It's going to open out into the community much more than it ever has before. And the only other thing I have to add is I think it's tomorrow night is the Future of Local News Coverage in Newport Beach, and that's going to be put on by Speak Up Newport, and it's going to be in the community room right behind you. It starts at 5:15 with a social hour, and then it goes, the meeting really gets rolling at six o'clock. And the reason I bring this up is because I've always felt that Newport Beach needs a more robust news gathering reporting in this town, given its size and given what's going on. And Stew News does a terrific job, and it's run on a very tight budget, and it's, and that's important to us. But I, as a council member, I'm, I wish there was more coverage of the council, and that's a, you know, maybe a good thing and a bad thing, depending on what we're doing up here at the time. But the community really needs to be made aware in a very professional way of what takes place at these meetings, what's on the agenda, and these, some of these small towns, we're a small town at 86, 7,000, many of them don't have the coverage. And fortunately for us, in my view, we have a very engaged citizenry in Newport Beach, well-educated, very engaged, but a lot more could be going out, and it takes a lot of effort to put out a first-class news organization in the town that's producing so much news, and a lot of it just doesn't get published because of, I believe, a lack of resources. So if you have an interest in that tomorrow, I think the speakers will be Tony DeDaro and Bill Lobdill and Tom Johnson, and those three know a lot about local news, and I urge you to attend and try and, all of us should try and get, work toward better news coverage in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. As Councilmember Grant mentioned, Spyglass Hill Picnic was really well-attended this year, and so to the folks who organized that, thank you. Upcoming, we have the Newport Beach Fire Department's and Lifeguard Appreciation Dinner on Thursday night. We also have the Water Wheel Groundbreaking on Friday, and then a whole lot of people are doing the bend-to-go this year, paddling from Catalina to the Newport Pier. That'll be on Saturday. And then I serve as the Chair of the, I'm sorry, the San Joaquin Hills Board for the TCA. Both boards announced recently that we'd hired a new CEO named Brian Chamberlain, who is going to be fantastic. So, thanks.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 18. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine will all be enacted by one motion, the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilmember Kleiman, do you have any items to pull from consent or conflicts?
I do not.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wigan?
None.
Councilmember Avery?
I need to recuse on item 10 due to the fact that I previously voted on this item at the Orange County Sanitation District Operations Committee.
Mayor Protem.
I'm going to be pulling 17.
Excellent. And then I do not have any then.
And Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Please.
Yes, if I may, yeah, we provided a memo on the dais. We'd like to, from the staff side, pull item number nine on the MOU with the library. We just have a little more discussion and work through on some of the elements of it, and we'll be back as soon as we can.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yep. I'll move approval of the consent calendar with item number one showing amended minutes, item number two being continued to a future meeting, recusal from Councilmember Avery on item number 10, and number 17 being pulled by me.
Wonderful. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grant. Wonderful. Let's go to public comments on the consent calendar. These are items we did not pull or continue. Any item, any comments on consent? None. Wonderful. Any additional council comments? Seeing none, let's go and take a vote.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. The motion carries 6-0.
Wonderful. Moving on to item 17, pull, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I don't need a staff report on this. I'm pulling this because I noticed in the discussion about the steering committee that there was a portion of the advisory committee that had been trying, that had voted on an item recommending a change to the housing element. I would note two quick things, and it's worth just pointing out because I don't want them spending time on things that are not going to happen. The first is, the housing element has been submitted to HCD, has been approved by HCD, and any modifications to that requires an incredible amount of labor and process, and the council has already decided on what goes into the housing element. Doing so and changing it, again, is not something that we have tasked the General Plan Update Steering Committee with, so I would just ask for the second time, please stick to the scope that has been assigned to you by the city council and recognize that any recommendations on changes to the housing element is unlikely and frankly, a waste of time at this point, given, again, the fact that we have gone through this process with HCD, and any modifications would be particularly difficult. So highlight that because it's important to note that coming from us. And I'd ask that the, in particular, steering committee that is supposed to be the steering of the advisory committee would make sure that they're paying attention to that as well. So I know this is a receive and file, but I wanted to at least highlight that because it's important for us that we know that the time is being well-spent. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go to the public on this item. You have any public comments on this item?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. I am on the G-PAC. I didn't read Nancy Gardner's memo, but I was there for the vote and the discussion, and it was not to modify the housing element. The committee's clear that that's not to be modified. What happened is, out of nowhere, staff brought a discussion during the land use element to up density across the city from what was approved in the housing element, and that's what the committee narrowly voted against, and it was a recommendation to the planning commission, and they'll make a recommendation to you. So we all know that you can do what you want here, but it was definitely not to modify the housing element. They're definitely aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hello, Nancy.
Nancy Gardner. I'm sorry for the confusion, because what the General Plan Advisory Committee wanted to do was take it out of the land use element, take Banning Ranch out, not of the housing, and staff didn't feel that that was a problem, except if you didn't like it. And the reason being that they felt that when the housing element was being done, there was still a question, you know, the sale hadn't been finalized and could understand the council saying, well, you know, we may be able to use Banning Ranch at a certain point, and certainly that was something the public always wanted. But now, the sale has been completed, there are deed restrictions, we've contacted the MRCA, and they said, you know... MRCA, and they said, you know, they're not gonna do any housing. So the general plan, there was a long discussion, and everybody in the, on G-PAC was just confused as to why it would continue to be. So it wasn't, we weren't trying, and I'm sorry that that wasn't clarified. And no, we aren't trying to change the housing element, we know that that's set in stone. So, just for that. So, would you prefer them, I guess while we're here, just to try and have guidance, would you prefer that the land use element not then be altered and it still continue to carry Banning Ranch?
Yeah, I mean, just real quick, generally, folks, we don't have interaction with public comments. I'm just gonna ask for just a quick moment, because Ms. Gardner actually is, this is actually would be really helpful. I think Nancy, the answer would be yes, we just need the land use element to be consistent with the housing element, and because it's still in the housing element, we would need it included in the land use element. I recognize the challenges of any future reality of it, but we do need it to be compliant or to be consistent.
All right. As I say, staff felt that that wasn't necessarily an issue, but we will, I will convey that message. That was just, that was, as I say, it was something that I think that the General Plan Advisory Committee realized, this was a council decision, but they felt it was confusing and wanted to get clarified.
You know, and I appreciate that, which is why I pulled it, so I could understand this better. So, you know what, I appreciate that very much. So thank you, thank you for that.
And we will convey, and we're clear.
Yeah, no, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Wonderful. I think that was well said by Nancy, thank you, and the Mayor Protem, but I am in full agreement to maintain the consistency between the two elements. All right. Let's move on, we don't need a vote on this, right? Now we're good, receivable, file, thank you. So let's move on to public comments on non-agenda items. So, if you plan on speaking on a non-agenda item, which tends to be the left side or right side if you're sitting out there, please feel free to line up, use both podiums if you have something to say. We're gonna try to move through this beautifully and efficiently, but we will hear everything you have to say and take it to heart. Please, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Blum and City Councilmembers. My name is Steve Gleyer. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and I live in the Jasmine Creek community. I had the opportunity to speak with you back in May on the topic of the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club, and I have, I wish to speak on that very briefly today. I serve as the Vice President of the club, and I have responsibility for communication and outreach. Since we started our work with the city on the lease renewal earlier this year, we have held over 15 outreach events with our community. This includes groups like Cronomar Middle School and High School. That includes Sage Hill High School, the Oasis Sailing Club, the Jasmine Creek Community, and many others. We have assembled a booklet containing all of the articles, we've already given this to you, that we have published in the Stu News, which I think you've already alluded to as probably the premier online communication vehicle for the city of Newport Beach, and we're very grateful for their support in communicating the outreach that we have been taking on. We feel that this information helps document the extensive effort made on behalf of the club as an outreach effort for the Newport Beach community. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last, one last thing. I was informed earlier as this group was coming up that one of our members who was a, who sits on our board, who was a past president, suffers from Parkinson's. And if you know anything about Parkinson's, it's from a 0 to 100 scale, and when he was assessed with it, he was writing at about 28. Since he's been working actively with the club, he's now down to 2.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Blum, and members of the City Council. It's nice to see you all again. My name's Andrew Dufresne. I'm the President of the Newport Harbor Lawn Bowling Club. Honestly, I wasn't sure which of two addresses I was gonna be giving tonight, and I have to say, I'm very grateful that it's this one. As you know, we're in the midst of our lease negotiation process. We had a very promising discussion yesterday with the city staff. So I felt like it was the first time that we came together and both sides were really listening and hearing one another's concerns. So I'm, I'm confident that in the next couple of months, that you will have a lease presented to you for approval that will be mutually beneficial. So thank you for that. I want to publicly thank the team for the city, so that is Lauren Wooding-Witmanger, Justin Schmel and Sean Levin for that. It's been a cloudy start to the process, but we're seeing some rays of sunshine, and I think their willingness to allow the time to work through has really been a great help on that one. As you'll see from what Steve presented, we've been busy. So that's, that's only six months of effort that is there, and we've seen over 1,000 unique visitors to our club. What that's doing for us is it's really breathed new life in a lot of ways, and a lot of new ideas into the club. We're getting a lot of increased awareness. People are talking about the club, they're talking about the sport. We love to see that. There's a buzz around the club, the members who are here talk about it, and they tell me every time they see me. Three quick things. Starting on October 8th, the Beach Cities are gonna be hosting the U.S. Open for lawn bowling. That's gonna have over 400 competitors from not only around the country but around the world. You've all received an invitation. We'd love to have you attend our opening ceremony on October 7th, that starts at 5:00 PM. Due to COVID, we haven't had this event since 2019, so this is a really big deal, we're very excited about it. Next one is, every year there's a global event known as the Champion of Champions where the individual men's and women's national champions compete against 48 other nations. The two bowlers that are representing the U.S. right now in Australia, one of them is actually playing as we speak, they're both count Newport Harbor as their home club. So we're definitely cheering them on. That's Charlie Herbert and Ann Nunez. They've both been recognized in this chamber before. And lastly, there is, we're hoping to kick off a new rivalry. Some of you have heard about this. We're gonna call it the Battle of the Beaches, and I'm here to officially declare that the City Council of Laguna Beach is open to challenging you to a home-and-home challenge at their club and ours. So have we mentioned that we offer free lawn bowling lessons? So if you'd like to participate in that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Craig Sheets, I think you got some photographs for me? On the ocean? Supposed to pop up there? No, well, yeah, that's the first one. That's called the Geiger counter. Perfect, thank you Newport Beach. This item right here, this counter, could go to every container, which is 2.5 million coming from other countries into our ports, east, west, south, as well, through Canada, so other northern continents. Could you please go to the next? Cintillation device will find a nuclear device in a container if it's contained in something that will protect it, such as lead, which is a better, better solution to save our water. Next, please. This is where they put the device, it could go anywhere. These containers are on Walmart parking lots. I see them in Brea, California, at a 76 gas station. I don't want any of us to go up in fire. Everybody agree with that? Please? We don't wanna burn, so go to the next one. This is the one, here's the swells. I've been studying things, and I've been so blind, I'm sorry. Should've had this here a long time ago. Newport Beach is my favorite beach in the world. It doesn't have fire pits to where everybody can urinate around them. You know what I'm talking about, it goes on the extensive for little civil tickets there. But you see the swells. If these purposely, these ships dump oil in these swells, which they know where they're at intentionally, and then it goes with a nuclear on it, we'll never see rain again, folks. We won't see anything. Next. Swell, same goes for the oil platforms. You can see all the oil platforms, I've dotted out there. That's our many on the Gulf Ocean. What is oil doing in our water? Next. Same. One of them nuclear devices with a container acting like a tool shed. Yeah, boys. And then it blows up ammonia, bleach, gasoline, everything that will destroy the air. Next. Pipeline extends from one end of the Pacific to the other. If it leaks into the ocean, another problem. Again. That's it. One more. Fire breaks. There we go. I'll be in Big Bear next month on the 11th. Fire breaks, should be a service road on the next one? There it is. And thank you very much for my allowed speaking. Appreciate you, Newport Beach. Hey, I like your Noah. That's a good ship, saving some animals and stuff, huh?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name's Brian Stewart. I'm an attorney here in Newport Beach, have been for 33 years. I am also a member of the Lawn Bowling Club and a member of the committee that is negotiating the lease. As Andrew alluded, he's our ray of sunshine, I am more the dark clouds, but we had what I would consider a very contentious meeting yesterday, and it ended up being very positive, so my comments tonight will be vastly different than as we had planned. But I've submitted a four-page letter that outlines all the legal details and the background of what we've been going through. It's in the packet. I don't want to belabor things that are in there. Just wanted to point out, if you don't know, when the Lawn Bowling Club was established, the City Council resolved in 1971 for Jasmine Park, I'm sorry, Jasmine Creek Park to be a senior citizen park, and it was required to have lawn bowling greens, and they directed the Irvine Company to convey those in the deed in that manner. The deed, which is attached to my submission, includes a diagram of where the lawn bowling greens are supposed to be. And so unless and until you guys have a new public meeting where you decertify that, that park is a lawn bowling club whether you renew our lease or not. I mean, you don't have to give us a lease, and I understand that, but it is still, as it sits, a lawn bowling club. And your general plan requires you to partner with services like us and to give people like us priority in the negotiation, and those portions of the general plan are cited in my letter. And so I think, as Andrew said, we're in a much more positive place on these negotiations. Still, we went from a one-year lease to a month-to-month lease, now we're at a five-year lease, I think, depending upon what happens coming out of those negotiations. When you have a small nonprofit corporation on a limited budget, when you start tightening the amount of time we have, there are other portions of this lease that increase our budget substantially. And in order for us to pivot and do things to raise enough money to meet those demands, we need a longer lease. And we're not saying we need a 30-year lease, but, you know, we're gonna, we're hopeful that these negotiations will bear a little more fruit. And I appreciate you listening to us, and hopefully, things will go much more smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Any other speakers on non-agenda items? Excellent, seeing none. Moving on to public hearings. Item 19, oh, we pulled, no, we didn't. Item 19 is Resolution Number 202352, intent to override Orange County Airport Land Use Commission's finding of inconsistency for housing element implementation.
Mr. Mayor, I, out of an abundance of caution, I am going to have to recuse myself on this item, based on campaign contributions that exceed $250 from Edward Selick, William Borgsmiller, and Nadir Quazi.
Wonderful, thank you. Let's move on to the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Simo Njurgis, Assistant City Manager, along with Jim Campbell, Deputy Director. We do have a presentation, but it's just, it's an item to send a notice to the Airport Land Use Commission. We did have a public hearing with them on an agenda item that's gonna be coming to you, that will probably be coming to you in mid-November, and they found us inconsistent. We recommend that you send a notice to the, to Airport Land Use Commission with your intent to override, and then when we come back in mid-November with the actual agenda item for you to consider, you can make a decision whether you want to override it or not override it. So our recommendation this evening is to go ahead and send that notice.
Excellent, that's very helpful. Any comments from the dais right now? Councilmember Kleiman?
Yeah, just quickly, before we go to the public on this, I know we got some email correspondence with concerns about the spheres agreement as it relates to this, and I had some concerns myself initially, I just hope that maybe the city attorney could touch on that, and the issue of consistent, being a consistent agency and whether or not that affects our action tonight.
Sure. The spheres agreement provides that the city will become a consistent agency for purposes of the airport land use plan, and they'll retain that consistency, agency status throughout the term of the agreement. So the proposed action that you have here tonight for the City Council does not have any impact on the spheres agreement. The City Council isn't taking any action, setting this up for a future hearing, so nothing that they're doing here tonight will have any impact on the spheres agreement. But I think the more important point is what, will the future action potentially, will that have an impact on the spheres agreement? So assuming the notice of intent is adopted, the City Council, you know, ultimately overrides the decision of the Airport Land Use Commission, the city would still not be in violation of the spheres agreement. That's because under the Public Utilities Code, the Airport Land Use Commission can only find inconsistency for very specific reasons. One is the city not admitting the general plan or specific plan, and the other one, which is more relevant to us, is if the City Council doesn't make required findings and take action to override a determination, that a proposed action is inconsistent with the plan. So I guess in sum, as long as the City Council by a two-thirds vote makes the findings necessary to override the, you know, the Airport Land Use Commission, the city's not in violation, or not an inconsistent agency for purposes of ALUC or the Airport Land Use Plan, and it wouldn't have any impact on the spheres agreement. And I think, I think that's an important point, and I'm happy to go into more detail if the council would like me to.
I think that was very helpful, Mr. Hart, thank you. Any other comments up here before we go to public?
Just a quick, quick process question, then. You say at the next meeting, we'll have to do it, it requires two-thirds?
Yeah, actually, 45 days from now, so it'll be in November, the meeting.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Well, either way, the next time we're talking about this, it requires two-thirds, so assuming Councilmember Wagon is still in conflict, is it two-thirds of seven or two-thirds of six?
There's an opinion that basically says it's two-thirds of the quorum that's here, so it does have to be two-thirds of the total body.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Grant?
Thank you for explaining the spheres issue, because it was something of concern, and we spoke about it earlier. I guess I'm wondering, just hypothetically, I understand that what you're saying is, is that even given the circumstance that we approve the inconsistent, we take that action, and it were to go to the Airport Land Use Commission, they couldn't find us inconsistent because we wouldn't be meeting the standard for that. But let's say that did happen. What would be the logical effect, if we were to be legitimately inconsistent, what would be the logical effect on either the spheres agreement or maybe the settlement, the airport settlement agreement? Can, I don't know if you can answer that now, or you want to come back with, maybe have staff look at that? I'm just curious, like, if that were to happen?
So I think it's very important that you always can be consistent if two-thirds of the body makes the required findings and overrules the Airport Land Use Commission's determination, so I think, I think that's the most important point. But if for some reason we were determined to be inconsistent, then the remedy is basically to require the city to submit all subsequent actions, you know, regulations and permits to the commission for review until the city remedies those, remedies that, that inconsistency or that violation. So that's, that's the remedy that the ALUC has if we continue to be, if we were to continue to be an inconsistent agency. But right now, we're going through the process, you know, the Public Utilities Code lays out a process for us to maintain our consistency, and we're going through that process. You know, no action's being taken tonight, and before the City Council takes action, you will be considering whether or not to make the required findings and see whether there's a two-thirds vote to do so.
Okay, so I understand completely, and I appreciate that explanation. I guess I would just want to get on the record that certainly, anything relating to the airport, anything that could affect airport expansion is something of utmost concern, and that we, the City Council would definitely want to have the appropriate information and make sure that we are crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is to not be jeopardizing either a legal position or a bargaining position or anything like that with respect to the renewal of the settlement agreement.
Jump out to public comments on this item. If you're panning on speaking on this item, now would be the time.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor Blum and council members. My name's Nancy Scarborough. Thank you for that explanation. I did read the cooperative agreement, and I didn't take away the public utilities from that. So I think there's a lot of concern in the residents in the area that surrounds the airport, and I think that maybe this could be a study session item. I do think it's important that we have a lot of support for whatever the vote is on the land use element in November of 2024, because if So there are two issues here. It's the settlement agreement and green light based on the land use vote. So I would appreciate any public interaction that we can have to help inform residents about what this really means and what we will or will not have at the end of the day with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Good evening. Would it be possible to bring up the current, I'm sorry, the existing John Wayne noise contours and new housing sites map?
Can hand it over to the attorney.
It's in the packet. Does anybody have that?
Oh, we all have the packet.
We have a presentation.
Oh, does he have a present? You want to end the presentation?
We do have those maps in the presentation.
Sure.
Is it possible to put those up? Okay, so existing and proposed. Great. So on the left is the existing. So my name is Mike Smith. I live in Newport Beach. I encourage the City Council to please stop this now. I'm not clear on if you're going to be voting on this tonight or not. If you are going to vote on staff's recommendations, I strongly encourage you to vote no. We do not want to see the existing John Wayne noise contours maps altered. As you already stated, the land, the Airport Land Use Commission on August 17 voted to keep the current noise contours areas and map. We request that you do agree and support their decision and vote, and again, please reject staff's recommendations that are listed tonight. My Bayview Santa Ana Heights neighborhood wants to keep the current map, as I've already We do not want to see any section, and this goes to the proposed, we do not want to see any section of the open space of the Newport Beach Golf Course developed for housing. This includes golf holes along Mesa Drive numbers three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. We do not want to see housing built in the 65 CNL noise area, and I do not want parcels that are bisected by a 65 CNL area developed for housing. Again, please vote no. I have a couple of questions, so I'll ask these mainly, I don't know if you can answer them now, but if someone could get back to us, that would be great, based on the Newport Beach 2021-29 Housing Element Report for the airport area. How many proposed housing units are in the airport area? Second, how many housing units have been approved and are in the pipeline now for the airport area as of September 12, 2023? How many proposed housing units are possible in the Newport Beach Golf Course Mesa area? We understand it could be as high as 693 in that area. We'd like to know if that's true or if there's more possible. How many proposed housing units are possible at the YMCA area on University? We're hearing that it could be 201 or more. We'd like to find out information about that. We'd also like to know how many proposed housing units are possible at the Marriott Hotel area on Bayview Circle and Bayview Way near Jamboree? We're hearing that it could be up to 100, but we'd like to know more about that project and where that could possibly be built. In closing, our residents' quality of life regarding the housing element issue is directly negatively impacted by our very own city's decisions when it comes to adding more and more and more housing. We just have 10 more seconds. Please vote no tonight if you do vote, and reject staff's recommendations. Please stop this process now for the benefit of our residents, and please preserve the quality of life we currently have here in Newport Beach. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Guys, we're not going to do that today.
Good day, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As I stated earlier, my name is Charles Klob. As you know, I'm the current president of SPON, and you also know that SPON is a signatory to the 1985 settlement agreement, an agreement that is of greatest importance to Newport Beach residents. I've also read Jim Mosher's comments as he was at the meeting when this was presented. We're deeply concerned that approving this today, which I know you're not approving it today, but you're kicking it down the road to be approved, will jeopardize that. And I respect Aaron Hart, but he's your attorney, and he's giving you advice as your attorney, but it hasn't been challenged. So, and also, how this looks with the county, where we're going to need three-fifths vote in some few years to extend the settlement agreement, it looks like something that is foolish, in my opinion. It's clear by the amount of letters you've received that this plan has not been well-vetted. As Nancy Scarborough mentioned, it seems like there's more outreach that needs to be done. And as Nancy Scarborough also said, it makes it much harder to get the public vote in 2024 to approve the land use element when you keep piling more and more distasteful things into it. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blum, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, in my written comments with my faulty memory, I mistakenly said I was one of only two people who attended the Airport Land Use Commission meeting of the Newport Beach Citizenry. There actually were three speakers, including Mr. Smith, and there might have been more in the audience. I'm not sure. I also think that acting against the county's wishes on this is a poor idea. And speaking of vetting, I think you should know that this particular proposal for implementing the housing element in this way has been reviewed neither by the city's aviation committee nor by the GPAC's noise element committee, both of which you would think would review this and suggest maybe there's better ideas. The whole thing, I think, sends a very bad message. Newport Beach has a long history of objecting to Newport, to noise from the John Wayne Airport, and by adopting this, we now seem to say, we don't think noise is a problem anymore. I don't think that's what the public wants to communicate. Particularly problematic, as I said, at the Airport Land Use Commission, is in this proposal, the idea that we are now going to aggregate the individual parcels into larger sites and treat any site, any small portion of which happens to be below 65 decibels, can be treated as if the whole large site is outside the 65-decibel contour and therefore doesn't need special treatment. I think that's particularly problematic. It's clearly inconsistent with any sound principles of airport planning, where actually, whether you're in or outside the contour would matter. And I think that would open, if even legally, your action could make the city consistent, I think that would open an avenue for litigation that your findings were irrational and unsupportable, in which case we would be then inconsistent. And then finally, if you are actually going to pass this resolution tonight and publish it, I hope that you actually read it before you adopt it. If you look on page 19-7, it'll be telling the world that we need to make these, at the top of that page, which is page 2 of 9 of the resolution, it says we need to make these amendments to our various codes and regulations to allow residential uses outside the 65-decibel area. I really think you need them to do it inside the 65-decibel contour. And if you read a couple of pages later, on page 19-10, it talks about generation aviation, which I think is supposed to be general aviation. And the airport people reading this are going to kind of not find Newport Beach entirely competent in these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Sue Dvorak, and I appreciate your comments, and I look forward to furthering this conversation with you. I'm going to go ahead and read what I had prepared anyways, okay? I have concerns about the city's proposal to allow residential units to be built near John Wayne Airport within the 65-decibel CNL noise contour area in order to satisfy the state's RENA mandate. Clearly, this mandate presents significant challenges for our community, but it doesn't justify allowing residential units to be built in an area which would expose Newport Beach residents to the adverse effects of increased aircraft noise and pollution. This housing proposal has the potential to create problems for the city and its residents for decades to come. More importantly, fulfilling the RENA mandate in this manner should not be undertaken if it has any potential at all to jeopardize our spheres agreement, susceptible to legal challenges during the upcoming settlement agreement discussions, or weaken the city's ability to advocate on behalf of residents where the airport is concerned. The Spheres Agreement lays out in part the following, and I am summarizing, that the city of Newport Beach will not annex JWA land without the written consent of the county, and in turn, requires that Newport Beach City Council approval for the county to construct a new commercial runway or extend a runway to the south. It also says that the city will become a consistent agency, and the city will retain the status through the term of this agreement, provided that the Airport Environs Land Use Plan, or the ALUP, 65 CNL contour is not expanded. While the city is currently considered a consistent agency because they're following the rules prescribed by the ALUC, that's the Airport Land Use Commission, I'm concerned that this may not be the case in the future because the city is proposing to allow for residential use within the 65-decibel CNL contour. The ALUC focused on this subject of inconsistent versus consistent agency during their January 2023 meeting, and the staff recommended that the commission could reconsider the definitions in the next ALUP amendments and could also consider including determinations of inconsistency. It's worth questioning, then, whether the ALUC could determine that Newport Beach is an inconsistent agency under an amended definition. If this should come to pass, it could put the Spheres Agreement in jeopardy and allow the county to construct or extend a runway without Newport Beach City Council approval. Finally, during the August 2023 ALUP meeting, a commissioner asked the county attorney present, at what point the city of Newport Beach becomes inconsistent if they continue to adopt a number of items which are obviously inconsistent with the ALUP? In response, the county attorney stated in part, quote, "There's going to be a settlement agreement that the county, John Wayne Airport, and the city is in, and they have to navigate that very cautiously so that they don't susceptible themselves to legal challenges." I'm greatly concerned that the city, in an attempt to meet the RENA housing mandate requirement, will begin to unfurl decades of carefully tended relationships and agreements with the county. I urge the City Council to consider the implications of your actions we'll have on the future of our airport-related agreements. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. If anyone else is planning on speaking, now would be the time to come up.
Dear master, I live in Bayview Heights area. Guess the best, most appropriate discussion is what this noise is and how you can choose to put housing directly under the flight path. I'm going to get, this is directly along the front line of Newport Beach Golf Course where the proposed housing is. And if you're willing to take the risk of runway extension, expansion of John Wayne Airport to build this housing, where won't you decide to build housing? We have lots of room in the Back Bay. There's lots of empty beaches. Where else in recreational open space to take away our golf course? And the earlier discussion about nuclear weapons, this is nuclear attack on Newport Beach. If the airport curfew is canceled, you're jeopardizing all the control of airport noise that Newport has fought for all these years is being compromised by this act to put this housing in the wrong place. Please reconsider that and consider all the consequences of doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers? If you are planning on speaking on this item, please come forward now. It'd be great.
So sorry. City Council Honorable Mayor, Trev Heining, native Californian, 33-year resident of Bayview Avenue, right under what we're talking about. Coming out from a different angle, you know, California has more residents leaving at this point. I think we're number two in the nation behind Illinois, and it's because of the policies of the governor and of his administration that is causing this, and that's the hammer that you guys are underneath. I don't know why you would even entertain this idea of giving the airport any space whatsoever, at all. So in my book, affordable housing goes right along with apartment homes. It's a nice phrase, but it means nothing. I believe that all housing is affordable. It's about how much you dream, how hard you want to work, and how much you plan. And all of my neighbors that are sitting here tonight have worked really hard, and we planned our lives to live where we are. To have our neighborhood destroyed by more noise or more housing that we don't want does not make sense to me. In my business, I travel all over the world frequently, and I'm always amazed by the cities and the countries who have realized that you don't defecate where you eat. Eddie Martin Field should not be what it is right now, Orange County Airport. If you did the right thing, you would make it a parking structure, and people would park their cars there, take a train out to Ontario International Airport, and fly out. To further defecate on Newport Beach and the Back Bay and all the things that we hold dear is not right. I'm asking you to do the right thing so that we're not in the City Council meeting in the future years to decide if we're going to be called El Segundo South. Thank you very much.
Any other speakers on this? Guys, we maintain order. You can put your hand up to show support, but no cheering, no clapping. Please. Thank you.
My name's Linda Geet. I've lived here in Bayview Heights for 31 years. The Airport Land Use Commission main responsibilities are: protect the public from adverse effects of aircraft noise, ensure that people and facilities are not concentrated in areas susceptible to aircraft incidents, ensure that no structure of land use activities adversely affect the operational integrity of the airports or their navigated airspace. The ALUC clearly stated more than once that your housing element plan has significant land use compatibility impact concerns related to the airport area. The places you want to develop for residential use have safety issues as well as noise issues. Yet you want to override the concerns and change the noise contours. I'm not sure how you are qualified to override that. Changing the noise contours could have major consequences for the Bayview Heights and the surrounding residents around the near, around and near the airport. We don't want to be like LAX. The values of our homes in Bayview Heights are already significantly lower than the other Newport Beach neighborhoods, and that is because of the airport. Again, you are dumping on our neighborhood the possibility that we will have to live with more airport noise and pollution if curfews and number of flights, et cetera, are changed in the future because you opened a can of worms by changing the noise contours. You continue to let our neighborhood down by taking away our public school and condemning our housing to build office buildings, and now you want to shoulder, for us to shoulder high-density housing that once was public space and deal with more traffic and overcrowding in the area. Please stop corroding our neighborhood. Do not change the noise concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, bring it up here. And I am just going to say a couple of things because there was, there was a good amount of comment out here. Where we're, where some of these buildings and this housing is, is not controlled by the city, right? The city is not building housing. We're not trying to build houses. We're not in that business. This is all private land that's being offered to develop or not develop. Okay? That's the first. The second is, we're all with you. We want to fight so hard to protect our settlement agreement? We don't want to do anything whatsoever to jeopardize it. That is why the city attorney first spoke before. We've asked these questions over and over again. We have delved into this. We are very, very, very concerned with the curfews, the time the planes take off. We get it. You know, I actually used to live off of Mesa Drive. I've heard exactly what that gentleman recorded and played. It's loud. It is a choice we make to live over there. It's great. It's a beautiful part of the Back Bay. I understand where we're coming from, and just know that we're not here to take away anything, to change the quality of life. We're working in a way to make sure we protect the quality of life in Newport. And I know that sometimes it doesn't always seem, from your perspective, that that is the way. But this is a letter to say, hey, these are where we're looking to put housing because these private people that own this land want to put something there. Okay? It's, we're just the city organization that makes something like that possible, but they're the ones that own the land. And if anything, if you look at the contours where some of these things are proposed, there's a lot of housing all throughout that right now. This isn't something brand new that doesn't exist there. There's no open space that's being taken away. There's a private golf course in one of them. There's a private golf course in one of them. So, I know that there's a lot of emotion out there, and we're not trying to change the face of Santa Ana Heights and that area. We're not. We're trying to protect it, and we are working with the county nonstop. And a lot of the people that have gotten up here and spoken today do understand that, and we're in the same fight, I promise. There's not a single resident of Newport Beach that says, let's end our curfew, let's expand the airport, let's get that runway bigger. So, from my perspective, and I do sit on the airport committee as well, we are constantly fighting to maintain those protections. So, sometimes there's just different ways to get to the same objective. So, I'm sorry if we don't see eye to eye on those right now. But, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to kind of work through, based on some of the comments. So, Mr. Harp, one of the question, one of the comments being made was this would affect next November's vote. I didn't understand that to be the case, so I was wondering if you could respond to that.
Yeah, I think absolutely. I mean, this changes the con, what we're talking about here is the noise contours. We're not talking about adding additional units. Now, changing those noise contours does have impacts as far as what can be developed and what the requirements are for that development, but no units are being added as part of this action.
Right. So, this, if, assuming down the road, this body changed the noise contours inside the general plan, then it, it's not something that would be on the ballot for vote next November, it would have already happened.
That's correct.
Yeah. And then, Mr. Georges, so one of the things that we worked through, so first off, I understand the arguments on why the state is wrong to be demanding that cities like ours be putting this many housing units in. These are arguments we've actually made three years ago and continue to make for the following two years, but the process of being and found incom, without compliance opens, opens the city up to many things, like the builder's remedy, that I would suggest people Google and find out how other cities are dealing with that and why it was important for us to find consistency, or not consistency, but have a compliant housing element. But, one of the things in the housing element, we actually contemplated essentially this concept, and so I'm wondering if you could kind of talk to, talk to that in terms of the housing element and where we, where we were planning on going in the airport area in terms of additional housing in that area.
So, I just want to understand the question, Councilmember, Mayor Protem O'Neill. So, when we started this process three years ago, we actually formed a housing committee, which were residents, that did site selection of where the housing units are going to go. And these housing units are just opportunity sites. And so, the committee is the one that decided where these opportunities are going to go. Some of it were placed closer to the airport than others, but the airport area was looked at as an opportunity for redevelopment. You had a lot of the existing office structures that are kind of, are starting to age out. The property owners were talking to us for opportunities to redevelop their property, and these units are just, those units are in compliance with state law, and at the same time, it is, these are just opportunity sites. And so, now we have our, and we put all that in our housing element. The housing element got certified by the State of California, HCD, and these are policies that are mandating us to, to, to implement the housing elements and create these opportunities, further create these opportunities. So, the noise contours are going to be adjusted, then we have the land use matrix, and then we have overlays, and then we have objective design standards that, which are all going to be coming later. So, all of this is, is in fact, in compliance with state law, which currently we are certified. And if we don't do certain actions, then we are threatened, our certification may be decertified, and there's severe fines and penalties if we get decertified by the state.
Yeah, actions like this. I mean, so that's, so that's part of the discussion as well. And then, and then also, Mr. Georges, one of the things that's discussed pretty extensively in the, in the staff report is that this change is not out of the blue. It was, these noise contours were actually used, and we keep talking about the settlement agreement, these were actually used in the EIR for the 2014 settlement agreement.
Good, very good point. This is, so this is not something we created, this is something that the county created. The county did do their noise study. These are the contours that the county created and put in their environmental impact report, and they approved their environmental impact report and said, these are the existing noise contours. And so, we took that noise contour and we, we used that as our basis to adjust our noise contours, because it's the county's. This is their, there's their, their noise contours. And it's separate from ALUP, and so we have to remember, ALUP and the county are kind of two separate bodies here. So, this is the county's EIR. We took it, we used it, and that's how we're going to implement the, the housing element. And this is certified as part of their EIR.
Yeah. See, ALUP's an interesting government body because they have, they have their own standards, and I understand that. I think this is my third time on council being, discussing overriding a decision at ALUP. And I remember, actually, it was interesting because we had someone who was on the ALUP board and then eventually became, I can't remember if it was the opposite, but he was either the planning commissioner, then on the ALUP board, or ALUP and then on planning commission, but either way, he ended up voting inconsistently with one, because he was on one board and he had certain standards on one, and then he had standards on another, and that's just, that's how it's, that's how it is, and I understand that. But, it's not, it's, it's not to say that, it's not to say that disagreeing with ALUP puts us out of compliance, which is what we've already talked about today. So, it's important to put that in context when we're talking about ALUP, but, and then just last but not least, any, none of the public spaces, none of the areas owned by the city are going to be developed into housing in this area. That's just, that's not going to happen. So, if we're talking about a golf course that's privately owned by a private company, that's a discussion that you should be having with a private company on their land, on what they would like to do with their land. And if they want to do anything with that land, eventually they have to come to the city anyway with, for this. But, this is, this is part of the discussion when we were having, you know, over the last three years, when we were talking about the housing element. We've been, we were begging people to get involved on that because of discussions we knew would be coming to us eventually. Dictates from the state. I remember there was a state legislator who said to, he actually tried to convince local electeds that it's a good thing to have the state dictating things like this, because then we can just point to the state and say it's their fault. I was very clear with that person, no, because no one's going to go to the state Capitol to complain, they're going to come to city council meetings to tell us why we're wrong. And that's exactly what's going to happen. It's happening, it's going to, it'll happen for as long as this housing element exists. And so, I understand, I would just point out, we have had a lot of public meetings on the housing element over the last few years, and we've had a lot of public discussion, and we've gone through a lot of discussion here and through that. So, when we went through and got a compliant housing element to avoid a lot of the draconian measures that happened, it's been very important to be part of that process, and it'll be important to continue to be part of this process, of course, as well. But, I would just say that, yeah, we, we understand the point that the state's wrong. We said as much. We've, you can go back and look at our appeal documents, and we've, we fought that fight, and we lost every step of the way, and so now we're here. So, I appreciate the frustration, because we share that. Thanks.
Councilmember Grant.
Just a few quick clarifications. Simone, so when the county adopted the standards in the EIR, that were presented in the EIR, what was ALUP's reaction then? Were they, were they considered, or was there any discussion of them becoming an inconsistent agency?
I'm asking Mr. Campbell if he knew, if ALUP reviewed it or not. Did we know that, Jim?
The housing element?
No, the county's, the county's EIR.
Right, because the concern here is, is that we're going to do something that's inconsistent. We're basing it on something that's already happened, and so what was the logical result of it last time? We don't know.
No, we don't know. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Maybe you could just find out and report back. The other thing I'm sort of like thinking about is, so we're looking at changing the noise contours in that corridor where there already is construction, there's already office buildings or, you know, other things. So, is that correct? It's not raw land, it's, there's something there that we're redeveloping, right?
Absolutely, correct.
So, am I to understand that the noise contours applicable to office or commercial, whatever is built there are higher, so that that's why there was already allowed to be development there? Or did it preexist, those contours, or how is that, how is that built out anyway now? Is it just because it's not residential?
It's not residential, that's correct.
Right, so the contours are higher for other uses in that corridor?
No, the, the, there's no, there's less of a restriction on commercial versus the residential side.
In the, in the noise contours?
Correct.
Construction's allowed in that corridor for commercial or office, even though, because their contours are, they're a higher standard?
Correct. The, the office standards are different than the residential standards.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions up here? Comments? Seeing none? Great. We have a motion on this one? I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second.
Great. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Moving on to item 20, ordinance number 2023-14, non-exclusive commercial solid waste franchise agreement. We need a staff report on this one? Seeing none? Wonderful. We have any questions from up here to start? None, let's go out to public comment on item number 20. Any public comment on item 20? Nothing from Jim. Oh, we got, oh, perfect. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Isaac Avila. I represent Roberts Waste and Recycling. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before today. We at Roberts Waste and Recycling appreciate the great consideration for allowing us to provide commercial solid waste in the city. We'll continue to provide the most reliable construction, demolition, debris hauling in the city as we have for many years, and we appreciate this consideration for the vote. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Seeing no other public comments on this item, we'll bring it back up here. We have a motion on this?
I'm with staff recommendation.
And seconded. And seconded by Councilmember Grant. Wonderful. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries 6-0.
Real quick, before we move on to the last item, back regarding item number 19, one of the gentlemen that spoke was also a conflict for Councilmember Wigan. Treb Hining also gave him over $250. Councilmember Wigan didn't know that until he spoke, that he would have potentially have a conflict with him, so I wanted to add that to the record.
Thank you. Let's go on to current business. Item 21 is confirmation of appointment to fill the unscheduled vacancy on the Board of Library Trustees. We have any comments or questions on this? No? Let's go ahead and go out to public comment on this item? Any public comment on this one? Look at that. All right.
And I just want to note that the appointee needs at least four votes in order to be Councilmember Wigan voted for Chase Reeve. Councilmember Avery Antonella Castro. Councilmember Grant Antonella Castro. Councilmember Kleiman Antonella Castro. Mayor Protem O'Neill Antonella Castro. And Mayor Blom Antonella Castro with five votes. Antonella Castro is appointed to the Board of Library Trustees.
Wonderful, and thank you to everyone that applied for this, and we encourage you to continue doing so, even if you might not have won this time. We would love to have, this is not winning, is it? Sorry, it's not winning. Thank you for your service for this one. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.